The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Okay, good evening everybody. Welcome to the Town Council meeting. It is Monday, July 17th, 2017 at 7:00 PM. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask Councilwoman Moranti to please leave us if you'll all stand. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have, um, welcome to everybody. We're not used to seeing such, so many faces. This is wonderful. I know you're here for a variety of reasons, but welcome to all of you. At this point, what I'd like to do is turn the presentation section over to Councilman Saunders. He is going to carry through with the next part of our agenda.
Um, we're here tonight to celebrate 28 years of service. And I'd like to have Captain of the Fire Company Kurt Plort come up and make an introduction.
My name is Kurt Plort, I'm the Captain of the Fire Company. We're celebrating John Coelho's 28, um, or 28 years of service to the Fire Department, the Fire Company. John was a past President, past Secretary of the Hartford County Regional Fire School and Hartford County Emergency Fire Plan, um, as well as a driver, operator on many of the apparatus on the, um, on the department. Always has an infectious laugh, so we're gonna, we're gonna miss that. Hopefully, uh, continues coming around, but, um, again, it's, uh, I really appreciate it, John's camaraderie and, uh, and friendship over the past 28 years. Thank you.
Thanks Kurt.
And we have so many of John's fellow firefighters out here to see him, uh, get this presentation, uh, award. Uh, for 25 years of service, for those who don't know, we, uh, we give a town chair and, uh, John is gonna get to do that, so, uh, yeah. Right there. So John, I don't know, did you, did you pick out, do you want a steering back chair or do you want a rocking chair?
It wasn't gonna be a chair, it was a scooter. It was like a scooter down at the casino.
We don't have a rocking chair for you to try out tonight, but, uh, just let us know which one you want.
I already talked to Kurt, he's, I already picked out the one with arms that rocks. It's a good way to set your foot on my arms, so that when I fall asleep, I can read back everything.
This is a chair, yeah.
Shake your hand?
Yeah.
All right, try out this chair. Doesn't rock.
But for wind purposes. China, it was a China.
Exactly. Twenty-eight years is a very long time to serve anywhere, especially with a group like this. Um, do you have anything you want to say?
Yes. I just want to thank my brothers and sisters in the Fire Department. They've been my second family. Hit me up. Born, raised Hartford boy, South End, and come to let these guys know about the different things that I grew up in. Because my dream was to become a firefighter, but I wanted to be a Hartford fireman because my dream was always to ride the back of that tiller and be the driver. Because Hartford had that old American flanched tiller and it came out of the South Green Manch, uh, Main Street and it used to come down Weathersfield Avenue. That's where I was born and raised, Weathersfield Avenue. And just watching that guy in the back and I said, I said, "Let it get, someday I'm gonna be in the back driving that truck." Taking those curves and all that with that nice truck. But, once I moved to Plainville and became part of the family here, things changed. Just, they've been second family to me and I love them. Uh, the Fire Company's been good to me, department, and also thank you guys for honoring me with this chair. And again, I still will be around and still will help out all the different things that the company's involved in. The Blooms Festival, Paso Suppers, seeing all the people that come in with Dr. Pettit and all that stuff there. Talked to him about different things. And Kurt was saying that I still am President of the Hartford County Fire Emergency Plan, which is the Hartford County Regional Fire School up at the Fire Academy up at the Windsor Lots where we oversee the training for the firefighters throughout the Hartford County for Fire Ones and Fire Twos. So, I got one more year there and, like, you guys, when you're sitting up there, when you're sitting up the table up there, it's a whole different ballgame. When you're President, then, you just can't hang out with the guys like you used to do and say, "Hey, this and, this and that." You gotta stop and think what you're doing up there. You know, when you're in charge of an organization with 49 instructors and we have some, uh, people here, our firefighters who are instructors up at the academy, it's, it's, we threw a lot of, lot of, lot of students. And the last thing I knew that, back when I first started, we were up to about 69,000. I think we're well over 100,000 students that have gone through the doors of Hartford County. Again, I want to thank everybody and thank you for the chair and thanks a lot.
They're taking some pictures, so in the meanwhile, I'll just fill in a little commentary. John, thank you very much for all your years of service to the Plainville Volunteer Fire Company. The work that you and our firefighters do is immeasurable. I am sure you were a marvelous instructor and leader at the academy, as much as you contributed to our local fire company. And we are indebted to our local volunteers for keeping us safe. There's a lot of time and energy and learning that goes into being a volunteer fireman. And from my heart to you, I say thank you for all of your years. Continue on.
Thank you.
Okay. If you'd like to take a break, then, uh, I know they all have places to be, we're just gonna take a brief break.
Should we go? Should we go? What should we do?
Okay. Uh, we do not have a public hearing this evening, so I will ask for approval of the minutes of our June 19th regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Announcements and reports? Do we have any announcements and reports tonight? No? Summertime, I guess things are a little bit on a different schedule. Okay, so we'll move along without that. Appointments and resignations, who do have an appointment tonight?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to appoint Danielle Novoe, 189 Whiting Street, as a probationary firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two?
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, motion to accept with regret the resignation of Brandon Lanza from the Plainville Aviation Commission.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for that. Um, Board of Education, we will not have a report tonight. I believe the Board is, um, in a special meeting and they have an abbreviated summer schedule, so we'll catch up with that at our next meeting. Report of the Town Attorney, Attorney Mastriani, do you have a report for us tonight?
I do not have a report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Moving right along here. Report of the Town Manager, Mr. Lee.
I do have a report, ma'am.
Okay, a long one.
No, no. We'll try to keep it brief. The first item I have is the Gold Star Memorial Fund update. The Gold Star Fund has a balance of $1,775. Donations received was $3,775 and disbursements from the fund was $2,000 leaving the current balance. During the fundraising efforts, it was noted that any remaining balances in the funds would be used to make improvements to Veterans Memorial Park. Uh, at this time, Town Staff is looking for direction from the Town Council on the potential use of the remaining monies in the Gold Star Fund. Um, you know, just wanted to at least bring it forward. I know that Mr. Doolittle, Mr. Burgess are here this evening as well. I know that they have one or two ideas, although there may be a few more out there as well.
Okay, um, you don't need an answer right this moment from us, do you?
No, not at all. I just want to remind the balance.
Okay. But, thank you.
And reminding people that, you know, that the balance was to be used for any further improvements at the, at the Veterans Memorial.
At the park?
Yes.
Okay.
Our next item I have is the High School Track update. Uh, the High School Track has been milled and paved. That work was completed last week and has been approved by the inspectors from KBA. Uh, the pavement now has to cure for three weeks before the new track surface can be applied. The start date for the track resurfacing is now scheduled for July 27th and is expected to take approximately three weeks to complete.
Okay.
Next, I have a school building project update. The grant application has been submitted to the State Department of Administrative Services. I spoke to the head of the School Facilities Unit and he indicated that they will be submitting a priority list for the Governor and the Education Committee in mid-December. The General Assembly is expected to make a grant commitments next spring. He also indicated that the reimbursement rate for Plainville is not expected to change from what was previously anticipated for the project. Uh, the timeline for the project is to have the work at Wheeler. The school will begin next summer. In order to stay on that schedule, schematics need to be developed and submitted to the state over the summer. Once the schematics have been approved, design development and construction documents will be produced. According to the existing agreement with KBA, the cost to produce the schematics for Wheeler is $160,000. This would be reimbursable item once the grant is authorized. If the schematics do not move forward at this time, the project will be delayed by a year. The High School paving project is expected to receive only minor state reimbursement. The paving of the High School is planned for next summer as well. The contract with KBA calls for the design and bid documents to cost $35,000. Unless the Town Council directs otherwise, I will authorize KBA to move forward with the schematic development, uh, for the Wheeler and the design work for the High School paving. The cost incurred at this time would be covered through, uh, short-term borrowing or internally financed through the General Fund. Next item I have is acquisition of state land on Pier Street. Town Staff is recommending that the town acquire two small parcels of land owned by the state located on Pier Street. I believe you have copies of, of, where those are located on Pier Street. The land was apparently planned to be used to construct an exit from Route 72 many years ago. It is anticipated that the state would transfer the title, this title, transfer this land at no cost. The land would allow for additional width along a portion of Pier Street that could be used as part of the farming canal heritage trail. Uh, will also assist a, uh, a person who's gonna build a structure, a commercial structure on the church property that was approved by P&amp;Z. Um, right now, uh, sewer line would have to go out of Broad Street, uh, because the state owns land in between, you know, uh, the sewer line that you get access on Pier Street. The Broad Street depth of that sewer line is in a 12 to 13-foot range depth, where on Pier Street it's, it's like six feet deep, so, it saves, you know, and, you know, we don't plan to do any paving on Broad Street, uh, that section of Broad Street for a while, so, it would also allow for that sewer connection to be made on Pier Street a lot easier if we acquire the property as well. So what we would do is we would send a letter to the state, ask them if they would transfer it down at no cost and, uh, go through that process. If the Council has no, you know, issues with that, we will, just didn't want to ask for it, whatever.
Okay.
Household Hazardous Waste Agreement, the Bristol Resource Recovery Facility Operating Committee, otherwise known as the BRRFOC, will be conducting three Household Hazardous Waste Collection Days next year. Those days will be on September 23rd in Prospect, October 7th in Bristol, and April 21st in Burlington. BRRFOC is requesting if Plainville would like to give our residents the opportunity to participate in these three events. Cost to participate in the collection days will be based upon the number of participants. While the final fee has not been, yet been negotiated, it's expected to be in the $85 to $100 range per participant. Although it's not expected that many residents will participate, Town Staff is recommending that Plainville have these collection days available to our citizens. Money, monies have been allocated in the town budget to cover the expected cost of participation and there is an item of the new business regarding this recommendation. We did have a collection day in Plainville last fall. We usually have them every other year. I'm not quite sure where we're going, uh, as part of the BRRFOC with long-term issues with household hazardous waste, uh, but this is at least get us through the, through the next year. If you decide that you want to participate. Otherwise, we don't have a collection day that we could direct our citizens to go to. Although more items are being, uh, collected, for example, paint. You can take back to the paint stores, you know, the, the oil-based paints which, you know, you know, uh, a lot of that used to come to the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day. Oil and antifreeze can be dropped off at the, at our transfer station in, in Plainville on Saturdays, so, uh, there's less that, that, uh, that is being collected to household hazardous collection days and there's other options to get rid of them, but I still, the Town Staff and I still feel that having these collection days available to citizens who call us and say, "Hey, how can I get rid of this?" Being able to give them these three days would be, uh, would be helpful as well. The other item I have is the Farming and Canal Heritage Trail update from the Steering Committee. The gap closure study continues to move forward. On May 22nd, a public information session was held where four proposals for the north-south route were presented, along with two proposals for the east-west route to New Brit. Almost 100 persons attended this meeting. Uh, the Steering Committee met last week on July 11th and is recommending Alignment C as the preferred north-south route and Alignment E as the preferred east-west route. Alignment C is currently planned would have a length of 4.75 miles, of which 95% would be what they call off-road. It is known as the Western Alignment, as it is the only alignment that goes west of Robertson Airport. It would be used, it would use the public right of way where possible and would connect downtown Plainville as well as Tomaso Nature Park in Norton Park. The exact route for Alignment C is preliminary and will not be final until the Town Council has approved it. The Steering Committee and the consultants are in the process of refining the preferred alignment and are exploring potential alternatives in a few difficult or sensitive sections of the, of the alignment. The area around Tomaso Nature Park is one of those areas. The Steering Committee is planning a workshop for September where they will seek input and assistance on some of these areas. There will be further opportunities to refine the alignment as we go and for residents to provide input. The date of September has not been set yet. I anticipate it'll be set within the next several weeks. I just wanted to add the Bohemia Street Study. After some comments were made at the last Town Council meeting, I requested Town Staff to perform a speed study on Bohemia Street. Anyone who was interested in the results of the speed study can contact me for a review of the results and to answer any questions regarding the same. I did provide a copy to, uh, Mr. Frangos early this evening. I have also requested that the Police Department conduct some additional speed enforcement on this street as well.
Okay.
Scott Colby's not here tonight to give happenings. He, uh, had an unfortunate incident over the weekend, so he had to go to the doctor.
Oh.
We'll keep it at that.
Okay.
So, I don't think he had that much to report on, uh, to be given, but, uh, as it is a little quieter in the summertime. That is all I have to report at the moment. I certainly available any question you may have.
Does anybody have any questions for Robert on, anything on his report?
Madam Chair, just one quick question. Robert, that Bohemia Street, that's on the southern portion of it, right? Not on the dead end portion?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Questions? Next portion of our meeting is the public comment section during this time. I see we have a lot of people here tonight and I'm not sure if you're all going to want to speak to us, but I have several that have signed up to do so. Um, the way this, um, works is that you'll give, you'll be given one opportunity to speak to the Town Council. You will be given three minutes to speak. I need your name and address as you come to either podium. At 2 minutes and 30 seconds, I'm going to give you a little heads up that you have 30 seconds to wrap up your comments, so just be aware, I'm going to be fairly consistent with that in light of the fact that we have a number of people here that want to speak to us tonight, so, that, that's how it works. You're allowed to speak on anything you wish. Do you, do we have a timer tonight? Thank you.
Fair enough.
Very good.
Substitution, Scott.
Perfect. Okay, um, the first, uh, person I'm gonna call up to the podium is Mr. Bob Doolittle. Mr. Doolittle?
Actually, it's Danny.
And Dan. You can both come up there.
It's his turn to talk.
I know, we get to, we get to when you guys show up, so.
My turn to stand and back ahead.
Dan Burgess, 39 Virgin Drive, Plainville, Connecticut. Basically, I'd like to say thank you to the Town Council for all that they did for us for the Gold Star Memorial Project. With dispensation of the money, if the committee would be willing to also sit with that $1,700 for expenditure, um, if it's not gonna be an inconvenience, that might be something to ease everyone's minds. Lisa in your office was very good about keeping track for some things that I asked her for and also Bob asked her for. One of the things I know they talked about was for a flagpole. Don't know if that's gonna be what we're gonna be looking for, but if we keep in touch with the same people who were on the original committee, we might be able to come to a decent conclusion that'll make everyone happy with the dollar amount. And really appreciate all your efforts to help us.
I think we can do that. Try to gather the, the folks back together again and talk about the remaining funds and, um, get some input from that group as to where they think that money should be earmarked, so, that's a good idea. Maybe a little, few weeks before we can pull everybody together, but we'll let you know.
We have plenty of time to try to do something nice for the town. We don't have to do it tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you very much for all that you've done.
Thank you.
We also, I, I ran into Roger, FFW, uh, about two weeks ago. Happened to be at McDonald's playing cards. He walked through, I haven't seen him there for quite a while, and, uh, went over and talked with him. And he basically, we were talking about Gold Star, possible money left over, things to do. And he basically asked for suggestions. And I said, "These are just suggestions. I'm not, I'm out of this now." You know, "I did my project, now it's your turn." Uh, I said, "If you wanted to do like stepping stones, um, and have like the different specialty service parts, and put it along the sidewalk from, probably from the Civil War Monument heading towards Maple Street, like you could have, um, the, the code talkers, the Indians that, that had the code if the Germans couldn't break."
Uh-huh.
A little something. Um, help me out here, Danny, you got four of them. What are you? Um, I also said the Army Corps of Nurses. I'm sure that they lost a couple of people in, especially Pearl Harbor.
Sure.
Uh, I can never think of their name. The black pilots during World War II that escorted the bombers. One more, one more. And the first thing he said to me as soon as I remembered the fourth one, which I kept right now, he said, "You already got precious for me?" So he must be somewhat interested. I'm not saying that they want to do it, I'm not saying, but he might be a good person to bring in.
All right. Well, we'll make sure he's included in the invitation.
Yeah, I just thought you might want to know about that, that there is some thought going into this.
Okay.
Okay?
Great.
That I'm out of this.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all that you've done.
All of your help was fantastic. Uh, if anybody thinks that the, it was, I didn't know what to expect. I've never done this before, I didn't know what to expect, it was nothing but fantastic. I mean, you, you people, I have nothing but respect for you. I really do.
You're great talker.
And everybody else is, and everybody else should respect you too for what we, we as a committee accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you again. Okay, next on the list is Elaine Belanger.
Elaine Belanger, 199 Cook Street, and I definitely have it under two minutes, so don't worry about the time. I just would like to express my concerns about the trail going, going through Tomaso Nature Park. Tomaso Park is natural. It's, it was meant for nature. It's a very serene park with wildlife that was relocated from the airport to there. And parts of it are very secluded, so if you're looking for peace, that's the place to go. However, um, dogs, bikes, fishing are not allowed in that area, which helps to keep it nice and peaceful. It was meant to be a nature park. No disruptions to the wildlife whatsoever. And it's only, as far as I know, it's only open during the summertime. Now, you're trying to enclose it with a, a nature trail. And I myself enjoy walking and looking for new places to walk all the time. However, while I go up walking, I meet a lot of other people and anyone that has four-legged friends likes to take our friends with us walking. And I know that there's no dogs allowed there, so I would never bring it, but I'm just thinking of all the other people using trails, taking their dogs with them that aren't aware of it. What are they gonna do when they get there? Most people really don't care. You know, they're gonna walk in with their dogs, because no one's allowed to see anything. I live with Pateroski Park in my backyard. It's a very small pond and what I see going on in a very visible area, there's constant trash being left behind every day. Dogs are running around loose, they're swimming in the water, people are swimming in the water. People set off fireworks at nighttime, fires in the evening. And one person was even capping there and so the police shot at them out, um, along with swimming. Now, if all this is going on in a very small area that's wide open, I'm just very worried about what's gonna go on at the Tomaso Nature Park, where people can hide out there and you never see them. Are we trying to invite people in to ruin what was created to be a very natural spot for nature? I don't think it's good to ruin one project to create another project. I just wanted to say my concerns. Thank you.
Elaine? Good job. Um, the next is Tammy Dupre.
Hello, my name is Tammy Dupre from 205 Cook Street. Um, I'm also here to state my concerns about the nature trail, um, park. As I, you've heard from me before about, um, Pateroski, um, when you start inviting, making trails, having areas that the public can start accessing, it tends to lead to a lot of garbage accumulation. Um, we are fortunate that we do have a pond walker that walks every day that picks up garbage along the Pateroski, but still, it doesn't even make a dent. Um, and it concerns me because it's, it's, the garbage also impacts the wildlife. Um, around Pateroski, we've seen numerous, um, issues where it, um, affects the birds, gets caught in their wings, ducks, um, different things, it's just, it, it's very detrimental to, um, a nature park. Um, and when you're talking about a place that's supposed to be serene and quiet, um, to me, the tendency is, I walk these, this, this rail, trail thing and, um, with my dogs a lot, and there's a lot of little kids, young children, um, teenagers, and they're not always so quiet. And believe it or not, voices do carry quite far, especially with living around water and on a pond. It's amazing how much further a voice can travel. And I don't know how far the, the trail's gonna be from the water, but to me, that's kind of upsetting the entire environment. And the second thing I'd like to bring up is the safety issue. Pieron Road is, is pretty much a secluded little area and then going into, um, the park where they're kind of proposing, um, I don't know what they're planning there, but I can't imagine the cops being able to patrol it too well, 'cause I know they have a real hard time patrolling even just little Pateroski and we have quite a few issues there. Um, and you can't really leave it up to the few people that are around to call the police because in this day and age, that's kind of a scary thing. So, um- So I just think it's just, maybe we should start considering maybe a different option or stay far enough on the way edges, or just maybe a more open area where that can be watched.
I have 30 seconds.
Okay. I'm done. Thank you. Thank you.
Next on the list is Marge Burris. Marge?
Hi, Marge Burris, Kumoutonview Drive in Plainville. I'm also chairman of the Conservation Commission. I have a real concern about Tomaso Nature Park and that area. I did take a ride down on Perrin Road. That road is not that wide, and I understand you would have to be taking, I can't figure out how you would put another 10 or 20 feet in to make a road, a paved traffic way for bicycles and dogs and walkers. I believe they've said something about easements, so now you're talking about taking property from people who bought specifically to be in that area, which is a quiet, secluded area. I went down to the end, so the end of that does open onto Tomaso Nature Park. Tomaso Nature Park is there as a nature park. There are no dogs, there is no swimming, there's no loud musics, you don't go in there and picnic. It's a beautiful, serene area. I've been in there before when we've gone through and pulled invasive weeds to try to keep that area looking as pristine as possible and making sure that our wildlife and everything that is in there is safe. If you take that park and open it up, how are you possibly going to get a road in there that's going to be ADA approved, because you're going to need paving to be able to make a path? You're going to bring in, the best I can see is a small Kubota to dig that area up. You're going to be destroying all the things that the Conservation Commission has done all this time. You're going to be destroying what Tomaso originally decided and what they wanted to do for that park was to make it a nature park. And I think that is a travesty. I think you need to look for areas that is around that. And I do have one more concern, well, I actually have two. I did take a little article out of the Connecticut Woodlands Magazine talking about the importance of silence and the fact that having a nice, quiet, serene place that you can go sit and relax has a lot of health benefits. And my other concern is the fact that when the last meeting was held, it was held at 2:30 in the afternoon when people are working. I don't know who planned it. The only word I can say for that is sleazy and slick. I do not think the town should have done that at all. The people that are involved in this, the people that live on Perrin Road, the people that are involved with that and the nature park have a right to know what's going on. People are working at 2:30 in the afternoon.
You have 30 seconds, Marge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is not a time to have something that's of this importance. Thank you.
Thank you. Roberta Loria.
Roberta Loria, 18 Perrin Road. Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I hope you don't mind, but I spoke with a few friends and neighbors and told them they might be interested in coming this evening.
Good job.
When I last spoke on June 19th, I requested your help in taking Alignment C, which includes Perrin Road and Tomaso Nature Park, off the list of possible trails going through Plainville. I hope you don't mind, but I would like to reiterate my thoughts respectfully, but hopefully be a bit more forceful and urgent in my request. As I stated on June 19th, Alignment C includes Perrin Road and Tomaso Nature Park. Perrin Road is narrow, most of the street has no sidewalk. We also have limited street lighting. We are somewhat secluded. As a resident of Perrin Road, I can say that I paid more to be there when I bought my house. When CRCOG came on June 5th, which included Tim Malone, Teresa Carr, and Mark Jewell, they referred to this as numbers and houses. As you can see by the audience this evening, we are not numbers and houses, we are families. As my neighbors can attest to, no one has ever called us, written letters to us, or knocked on our door asking for our opinion on this whole situation. We have serious concerns about the strangers and the possibilities of what could happen on this road. Allowing strangers to come through our road is a recipe for disaster. It is not a matter of if something's going to happen, but when. As I mentioned at the last meeting, two teenage girls were killed in Indiana on a trail. The individual has yet to be found. A girl was approached in Simsbury on a trail. And as I mentioned, on Father's Day, I saw a man slowly riding his bike down our street looking at all the houses. Many people were not there that day because it was Father's Day. When he realized he was being watched, he sped up the street and took off toward the airport. In regards to Tomaso Park, this park-
30 seconds, Roberta.
This park is small and was built to be a natural habitat for wildlife that will be disturbed with this expansion. I would appreciate your help with this, and again, requesting that Alignment C be taken off this list. There are plenty of other opportunities that can be just as good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Anthony Loria.
Anthony Loria, 18 Perrin Road. There's already, I'm against this 100%, there's already people coming down the road. I go to work at 5:30 this morning, some guy's going by the street already. And if it wasn't because of this time of year, I might not have seen him in the winter or fall, because of the lighting and everything else that's going on there. It's an unsafe area to be having people going by up and down. All the guys go to work at different times. I might be one of the earliest. But people at 5:30 in the morning coming up and down the street, that's something you're not really expecting any time of year. And then with the lighting, it's very difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Steve Santa Cruz.
Hey, Steve Santa Cruz, 4 Perrin Road.
I was looking for your father.
Oh, yeah. Should have brought him tonight. I was blindsided with this Saturday afternoon, and never heard about anything with any trails going down our street. I oppose this, and I don't know, I just thought it was very, it wasn't good. I don't know what else to say right now at this time, but I oppose this, and that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Kistler?
John Kistler, 65 Forest Avenue. Good evening, Town Council. I'm going to start off with a little bit different subject. It's still irritating me the way the town manager read quotes from us citizens from a meeting before. I find that completely inappropriate and unprofessional. And I wish this council would talk to the town manager and work with him on his people's skills. It's definitely desired. I'm here now to support the people on Perrin Road who are opposed to that rail. I went down there, I met with Roberta. That's a small road. And the other thing, people will start parking their cars on that road to get to the woods for the trail. Town will put up no parking signs, and then the people won't even be able to park in front of their own houses. You have to go down there and take a look. And the biggest thing that I see is the nature park. That was made to be quiet and serene. You should never disturb that place. With all these people going through there with bikes and walking and bringing their animals, you're going to disturb all the wildlife. It'll be ruined. So I'm agreeing with the residents there. How would you like it if that trail was going through your house, Mr. Azurka? How would you like it if they did that route down Usher Avenue to get off Farmington Avenue? You wouldn't like it.
I have a lot of questions.
Right. I don't think anybody would want anything like that in front of a quiet, private residential road. I mean, that's ridiculous. Get rid of that C plan or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. Connor, I'm sure I'm not saying that right, sir, but you can correct me once you get up to the podium.
David Kemmer, 38 Johnson. I have to be opposed to Perrin too. I watched this play out north of Burlington, Vermont, in Colchester along Mallett's Bay, and they destroyed the area up there. Their option was to build a solid fence in front of the properties, making everybody's front yard a backyard. You're going to have to put fencing, so the only way in and out is through their driveways, so they won't be able to get their mail without going out the driveway to, and traffic. There's a lot of, this has to happen, because it's going from where? New Haven to North Hampton, and it's done, except for Plainville and part of Southington? I mean, it has to be done. What's wrong with our bike path down northwest and riding the high side of the river? Or the airport fence and the backside of that industrial area? I mean, there are bridges everywhere. Farmington has built how many bridges? Rebuilt the railroad bridge, they're going across Route 6. What's wrong with a boardwalk across the shallow part of the river, either into our new nature preserve and into town, or to the other end of the runway? We can drive cars right at the end of the runway. Why can't they cut across the other end of the runway and come back in? So you have, and it's supposed to be a hiking, biking, quiet place, the high end of the river from the bike path, and then come across the end of the runway, back across, or into the new nature preserve where we took out all the flooded houses? There's options that are beautiful, secluded, out of people's way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Maria DiMauro. Maria?
Hi, I'm Maria DiMauro. I live on 20 Perrin Road, Roberta's neighbor. I too strongly oppose Option C, going down Perrin Road. I don't believe that is a very good option. There's better alternatives. I do have a couple of questions. One is, when does the public get to review the details of the plans? And will that be available to the public before the council votes on it?
There is some, I'll try, I'll attempt to answer that for you, Maria, and then Mr. Lee is going to fill in the gaps that I leave out, because obviously there's going to be some. There is, at this point, another hearing, I believe in September.
Yeah, it should be scheduled, but it'll be in September.
We believe in September. And at that point, I would expect that the public would be able to give their input.
It's for the public.
I'm sorry?
It's for the public.
Right. But they would be able to get up and ask questions and, you know, get some answers to some of those things. So the date has yet to be determined, but in September.
Okay.
And I will say this, at this time, the town council actually is going to have to take a vote on the final plan, so rest assured, I know that some things are out in publications and newspapers and things of that nature. But the town council has taken no action on this whatsoever, and as you can see, it's still a work in progress.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next one I have is Art Marino. You can correct me on that one too, sir.
It's Art Marino. I'm from 22 Tuttle Street in Bristol. And I get to meet you guys, I'm the curator for the Tomaso Nature Park, okay? When Ruth passed away, she turned the park over and asked me to run it. I run it basically as an educational program for the children and organizations that are looking for habitat and wildlife environments. The commission, back then, we built that park in 1989. I remember going down there and doing all the man-hours, the time going out there with waiters on and pulling turtles out, birds out, and moving them all over the place into the new sections. If we turn around and let this corridor go through there, the wildlife that we have in there, which are blue herrings, turtles, ducks, geese, believe it or not, I was down there about two weeks ago giving a tour to a group of kids, we found a bear, okay? So what are we going to do? We're going to lose that? We're going to turn around and rid of our secluded areas, our nice serene areas, because we want to put a path through so everybody can go walking through and leaving their garbage, their animals' feces and stuff? That's not the way it should be. It's a natural park. That's what we built it for. We built it for the people in Plainville to turn around, be able to go down there, learn about the nature, learn about the habitat, learn about anything they want and learn nature's ways of living. But I can't see us turning around and letting it go through. If you do, you're going to lose something that you're never going to get back. And the only reason I'm saying that is, I took a walk through the one down in Farmington. I was very disturbed, because there was a guy riding a bicycle, and because a turtle went across the path, he stopped his bicycle, went over, grabbed the turtle, and just went through it. Do you want that to happen there? Because I think it's going to do that. We have snapping turtles, we have turtles that are laying eggs out there now. Like I said, I was out there two weeks ago, the eggs are hatching. That's all I need, is people to go walking through with the animals now and pick them up and throw them around. You can't have that. That's harassment and disturbing the wildlife. I won't put up with it, okay? I stood out there with Ruth Hummel, built that park, and I don't want to see it get ruined. Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do. We appreciate that. The next on the list is Troy LaMontagne. Troy? You're all set? Okay. Next is Doug Lord.
Hi, Town Council.
Hello.
I'm your town librarian. I live at 58 Venice Drive in Burlington, Connecticut, and I'm just here to thank you. On behalf of my, the library's board and the Board of Trustees and the staff of the library and many, many patrons who have spoken to me, I just want to sincerely thank the town council for a couple of repairs that you authorized through capital expenditures a couple of years ago before my time. Sidewalk repair and window trim around the library. It looks a lot, it's much more safe and it looks a lot better. I appreciate the recognition of the library's importance to the community. I also appreciate the acknowledgement that the building is not perfect. It's 15 years old, like many teenagers, it has issues. But I know, I appreciate your commitment to the, to helping me keep it a little gem of the downtown area and a destination that is great for everybody in town from age zero to age as high as you can go. So I just wanted to thank you very much, and I'm very grateful to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I've gone through the list of those that had signed up, and I will ask if there's anybody that wishes to speak to the council that did not have an opportunity to sign on the list. Does anybody, yes, sir?
Hi, my name's Jeff Poehler. I live at 24 Perrin Road. I apologize for my late arrival. I'm also the Assistant Building Official in Town of Southington. We had an emergency over there, so the paying job wins.
I think that first.
Yeah. So I live at 24 Perrin Road. I have two beautiful little girls over there. We have some serious concerns about the trail coming down our road. The road is very narrow. My kids play in the street. It's very concerning for me, the amount of volume of people that are going to be coming down there. We used to live on the corner of Hemingway and Willis, down there by Norton Park. And when I tell you there's a high volume of people coming in and out of there, I know what it's like to live there. I don't want to have that replicated. We paid extra money, like Roberta said, to live on a dead-end road, to have the privilege of not having all that foot traffic coming through our house. As far as the park goes, we walked it. I've walked the trail that you guys have posted for Option C. I have several questions. How are you getting underneath 72? How are you getting over the river? There's an elevation change at the highway that doesn't make any sense. You're going to have to tunnel underneath there. If this is supposed to be the cheapest option, I don't see it happening, not to mention destroying the preserve in the meantime. I apologize for being a lot of sorts, but it's just, we all take this to heart, this is where we live.
It's our neighborhood.
It is our neighborhood. And when I tell you it's a neighborhood, judging by the showing tonight, we all are deeply concerned about it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that had not signed up? Mr. Lalama? Mr. Lalama?
Carmine Lalama, 37 Bohemia Street. I'm with these people that are on Perron Road. The only question I have is, how are the cyclists getting through Plainville now? I see sometimes they're in uniform. I know they're cycling through. What's their path that they're doing now? Did anybody ever study them or ask them?
Well...
You don't have to answer it now. I mean, but I see people going through. They're going through some...
And the goal was to create a path that would be off of the regularly...
I understand that, but shouldn't that have also been studied, what these people are doing, what path they're using?
Yeah, it has.
Before you do this, settle on a path through their house. See what path they're using now. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Joanne?
What? Did I get your phone?
Yeah.
Oh, God. Joanne Edmund, 166 West Main Street. I am going to forego the prayer tonight because the... This issue of the trail is bubbled up to the surface and is very, very important to speak about tonight. I am totally in opposition to Exhibit C. It doesn't make any sense. When you have Exhibit B, what is that one, to the east or the west? And the other one is D to the east or the west, whatever? I think that's the west. And it makes more sense than C. To disrupt a quiet neighborhood with a narrow street and, Lord help us, Ruth Hummel's gotta be turning over in her grave with the fact that you are going to invade or even think about invading that Tomaso Nature Park. Don't even think about it, because it's... It's bad. There's a lot of words I could use, but it's bad, even think about disturbing wildlife. So I think that these people that are here tonight have a very legitimate concern. I'm sure that's a deep concern, because sometimes you say you can't fight City Hall, but I think numbers can. And I hope you keep fighting, because we, the people, and that's what we are. We, the people, it's in the Constitution. And this is what we need to do, is fight any kind of absurdity. So, there.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Mr. Francos? Go ahead, Mr. Francos. Your turn.
Luke Francos, 10 Fairbank Street. I'd like to start by acknowledging the presence of our state representative, Dr. Pettit. And I think with his going for a first-termer going into Hartford and what's going on in Hartford, I think if anything, he deserves a battle start, so... The second one is, and I'll highlight here, I just got a report this night from the town manager regarding Bohemia Street and the speed traffic, the checking on speed. I just wanna thank the town for how quickly this has been investigated. Number three, this is just general question now. This heritage trail, and I am, to be honest with you, I am sympathetic with these people. The idea of watching strangers going up and down my street, and it's nowhere near as large as these people have, that gets my interest to start off with, if nothing else. My question there is, and this is a general question, if somebody could answer it. The process is, as I see it, is there's three trails. Example, there's three trails. Someone makes a decision, we're gonna use, in this case, the heritage trail. All right? I'm just using example. Who approves that final verdict?
Town council.
Is it the town council?
Yep.
Okay, so the onus is on you, folks. Positive or negative? I'm sorry. Positive or negative? Okay. I guess I want to know that. Three. Okay. The other thing, another general question for the town council. The work being done on the track, if I understand this correctly, there's arbitration involved before there's a payment. And part of that arbitration, the town may have to pay for it. Okay, help me with that, please.
There's mediation, not arbitration, to start?
There's a difference.
Oh.
It is a difference.
No, no, I'm not...
Mediation is something that's voluntary. Arbitration is something that's... When there's a decision by the arbitrator, that's mandatory. So it will start with mediation. Town doesn't have to pay for that at all unless they ask for us to be a party to it, and then we share in the cost of the mediator.
We share... I'm sorry, you share in the cost of the what's?
Of the mediator.
Okay. All right. I don't know, I'm just... Pardon my ignorance on this. Does that mean the town will have to put any money into the building of that, rebuilding of that track? Is there a possibility?
Yes.
Through mediation, arbitration, or whatever?
We don't see it as a possibility, but it is a possibility. Because we don't see where the town was blaming for the track.
Okay, but then, but we may be... We may have to pay. All I'm... Here's my basic question is this. We're doing, from my little world, if I were to go out and buy something, and somebody out bought a car, and somebody gives me the keys, and I go driving, and just as I'm driving out of the parking lot, they turn to me and say, "Oh, Mr...." "By the way, Mr. Francos, that now costs you $5,000." Wouldn't I wanna know this cost before anything is handed over to the building of the track? That's my point. We don't know what the cost is gonna be if we are impacted. Is that true or not true?
I don't believe we'll be impacted.
Okay, that's the answer. Okay, I'll leave it at that. The next, let's see, where am I now? The school project now, the Wheeler School Project, and I'll conclude on this.
Another 30 seconds, because I know that you've interacted.
Are we putting any money into this Wheeler project as we speak?
Yes.
I thought we were not putting anything into this until it was finalized by what was going to be happening in the state, and we were already putting money into the Wheeler School Project. Am I... If I'm wrong, please correct me.
We aren't doing that. We just... We're going to vote on some of these things tonight. Money's have to be expended in order to get some finalized plans in place so that the project can begin next summer. Those costs will be folded into the total cost of the project when we finance it permanently.
All right. And...
You understand the timing of that. Certain things have to happen in a certain sequence in order for us to stay on our timeline for next summer.
I understand. Okay. My only concern with that is, as been mentioned by the town council, if we do not get full funding from the state, that project's dead in the water. I may be... Do I stand to be corrected on that?
No. And as Mr. Lee explained this evening earlier in his report, we are still expected to get the reimbursement rate that we were talked to by the folks up in Hartford. He's already said that this evening. So we are going by that guidance that we're getting from the folks in Hartford, that we are gonna get that rate. Therefore, we have to take these next steps in order to stay on our schedule.
Again, I'm gonna repeat myself before I leave. The concern I have was, there was a number, and I asked, and the number said, "We get total commitment from the state or this project doesn't start." And that's what I'm living with.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and information.
Mrs. Saunders?
Good evening. Andrea Saunders, 55, Lawn Drive. I apologize. I just wanted to just quickly do my Board of Ed report. We had a meeting in the other room, and it got out after meeting hours started. Basically, school is closed at this point. We have our summer programs up and running. And the only other thing that we'll be doing is the administrator's contract negotiation. Their contract is up next June 30th, so we will begin on Wednesday negotiating that, and Mrs. Paglisi is part of that negotiating team. Other than that, that's it, unless you have any questions?
Questions for Mrs. Saunders?
Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
My name's Tim George, 33 Johnson Avenue. I'm also against Option C for the heritage trail down Perron Road. I think it's a terrible idea. It is a small road. It's a quiet neighborhood. Like they've said before, we all bought in that neighborhood to be secluded and be private. If we wanted to live on busy areas with lots of people traffic, we would've bought houses on main roads. We already have vehicle break-ins in town. We've had vehicles stolen off of Maxine. Do we really want more foot traffic past all our houses? I mean, I used to park my car, go in the house, and not even lock it, never even thought twice about it. And now it's to the point now where I won't leave the car in the driveway without locking it. And the idea of adding more traffic of people walking up and down that area, man, just doesn't sit well with me at all. So that's really it. Completely against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that had not signed up? Marilyn?
Good evening, council members. Marilyn Sharet, 18 Milford Street, Plainville. First thing I wanna say is, I'm in total support of all of these wonderful residents on Perron Road and the numbers that came out. They certainly have given you a very powerful message tonight, and I certainly hope that you're gonna take it into consideration when it's time for you to vote. For me, it's a no-brainer. And secondly, the other thing that I wanted to bring up, I felt as though, at the last council meeting, that it was really inappropriate, the comments that the town manager made, trying to join the quotes of each of us that got up and spoke against the renovation project over at the school. And I have a message for him. Before speaking, recognize what motivates your words. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not spoken yet tonight? Mr. Mercer?
Good evening, council, and all the residents of Perron Road here. I agree with your method of taking care of what needs to be taken care of. You did it eloquently, as far as I'm concerned. I wouldn't wanna be on the council if you do anything to the nature park. Because Ruth Hummel is still there.
I think she's here tonight.
She's in the nature park under a rock. That's where she wanted her ashes buried.
She's buried.
So I wouldn't wanna be struck by lightning if I were you on the council. I'm definitely in favor with the wonderful people that came here to speak tonight. Just a couple of quick questions. Anyone on the council familiar with the airport runway? Do you know that this project is taking a piece of the runway approach to 20? It's going right across it. And I haven't been against it since it was brought to the table, and I voted against it, and I still will never put anybody in harm's way for just to do something like that. It's not necessary. And I would really get that some serious consideration, because the FAA owns the air above the ground, but we own the ground. Now, if somebody goes off the end of that runway, and you've got 30 cars parked there, and you've got a pavilion, and you have a lot of people there, who's gonna be responsible? Think about that. And it could happen. Especially if somebody came in for, overshot the runway and tried to take off again, and couldn't make it, that's where he would land. That's another thing. But an nature park shouldn't be touched. And if that's not enough, then I'll have to go to confession again. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not yet? Oh, yes, sir.
Dave Spencer, 127 7B, Milford Street Extension. Perhaps there's another choice that we haven't considered concerning this trail. Many of the surrounding towns have had obvious routes, where there were old railroad tracks, et cetera, places that obviously lent to, you know, the route of this trail. We're having difficulty in Plainville because we don't have any obvious route, so we have all these different options. Perhaps the option to consider is that we don't build the trail at all. Or we build it where we can, and people who wanna connect from one part of the trail to another can find routes through our town roads. I mean, it's gonna be difficult anywhere, and, you know, we're our own town. We're sovereign. It's not written in stone anywhere that we have to build this trail. Perhaps it's a nice idea, but it just doesn't seem like it's lending itself to a real nice possibility in this town. And I mean, obviously, I don't want Tomaso Park touched. It's a beautiful little park. It's a gem. And I mean, these poor citizens here on a private road, they don't need that. There's nothing that says we have to build this park. I mean, if the other towns wanna get upset with us, you know, so what? Let them get upset. Thanks.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not yet?
Joseph Gohard, 14 Perron Road. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Joseph Gohard, 14 Perron Road. I have two kids here. I'm concerned with this project here. My son, Tony, for instance, he's young. He's got an older brother that's going to college this year, and when he's bored, he kinda just walks off. We leave the doors open at times. I'm not even home at times. You know, my wife's not home, she's away. And he feels good just to walk there and go to the nature parks and those two benches they have there. And, you know, I wouldn't feel that if he has to do that with a lot of people going through this trail that's gonna be built, hopefully not, but, you know, I wouldn't feel that he's safe going there anymore, because, you know, you don't know what happens these days. I'm against it, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Anybody else? Last chance. Okay. I will close this portion of our meeting. Thank you all so very much for coming tonight and sharing your thoughts with us. It's very important that we hear from everybody. Onto new business. We have no old business to discuss, so on to new business.
Adam, Chair.
Yes.
Motion to authorize the town manager to enter into an agreement for the collection, management, transportation, and proper disposal of household hazardous waste materials between the Bristol Resource Recovery Facility Operating Committee.
Okay. Continue.
All right, you want me to read it again?
Why don't you do that? I think it got lost on this.
Motion to authorize the town manager to enter into an agreement for the collection, management, transportation, and proper disposal of household hazardous waste... management, transportation, and proper disposal of household hazardous waste materials between the Bristol Resource Recovery Facility Operating Committee and the Bristol Facility Policy Board and MXI Environmental Services LLC for fiscal year 2018.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Not? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
Adam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds listed on the addendum.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have any other items of interest for discussion, Mr. Lee?
No.
You do not? Okay. We don't have an executive session, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.